Good evening and welcome to the October 23, 2017, meeting of the Florissant City Council. I would like to welcome Nigel Bailey up, who is an Eagle Scout, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shildroth?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Vigano?
Here.
Parson?
Here.
Sayam?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of October 9 and work session meeting minutes of September 20, 2017? Mr. Parson?
Madam President, I just want to make one correction on the workshop work session minutes from September 20. As in terms of council members present, it has Schmidt listed and not Parson.
We will correct that. We will amend that.
Thank you.
I'm very sorry.
Yes.
Oops. That's what they call it. Cut and paste.
Constable Man Parson moves [laughing] to approve the amended minutes of the work session and the meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The meeting minutes are now approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening, for three minutes. Please remember that this is not a question and answer period, but we would be happy to speak with you after the meeting. Also, if you were here for a public hearing, we can discuss it at that time. The first speaker is John Engelmeier.
John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant, 63031. A question for you, Madam President. Rather than taking the time for hearing from citizens, I was going to ask if the certificate of recognition could be given to Nigel prior to hearing of citizens. If that would be okay with you. I don't have an issue.
I guess I don't-
Change the agenda to push Nigel above. If you have a problem with that, I'll talk. Hearing from citizens. Bill number 9319 is on the agenda tonight. I don't know whether that will be read in entirety because it was on the agenda last time. And this is the second, I believe, it doesn't be the first reading of that bill. And I don't know if it was going to be read in entirety or not. Other than that, that's the only thing. And the budget meeting will be tomorrow night, at which point I hope I'll be granted the time to speak, as I have passed on the other meetings, the budget session meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engelmeier, maybe you can answer me from there. I'm sorry. You were talking Bill 9313?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. I apologize. I heard a different-
It's a little short.
Oh.
No. It's eighty-six pages.
Okay.
Is that only-
I have it as a first reading tonight, but it isn't ninety-six pages long. Did you have a card? I just saw someone filling out a card. And there we go.
I think she's got her liquor license.
Okay.
No, I asked what she's here for.
Is this here for the liquor license?
No, no.
No, no?
Yeah, I just liked the speech.
Oh, come on.
May I?
Is it Eiko Shepherd?
Yes.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Right here, right?
Mm-hmm.
My name's Eiko Shepherd. I teach Judo. I have been in Judo fifty-eight years. Throughout these fifty-eight years, I have been privileged to traveling all over the world, all over the states. I have been meeting great leaders each state, place. And I just wanted to share with you this Florissant. That's a great leader here. I have been experiencing this, nothing about the positive. End of July, I sponsored this Judo seminar at the Egan Center. And Mr. Mayor, he came and made a speech, welcomed this, every one of these people, participant from all over the state. We had international guests from Japan, too. And during this speech, what Mr. Mayor, he said it was, I think, helped attention in this participant's heart. And he said, "Thank you for coming." He said, "No, thank you for letting us come in." So that's how we felt it. There's nothing about the positive. So they want a home. They're so positive feeling. And I think everybody knows this around here, still, "Are you okay here around here?" Because that news was all over the state. So, "Yeah, we're okay." So Mr. Mayor, he came, made a speech, a fantastic welcoming, made everybody safe. And most of all, end of the speech, he said, "Thank you for coming." Everybody stood, "No, thank you for letting us come in." So that was really hitting this people's attention, and they heard a lot of appreciation. Also, I have been, what's it, the Florissant School District, thirty, twenty-five years, so thirty years ago, I created this academic program. And we do this through the Judo practice. I usually do this promotion for the academic, which is, you know, I'm parents. I am parents, too. And our parents' headaches is, "Our children, they don't study. Always having problems." So I created this second Judo academic program through this Judo program. Since I have started the teaching, this Egan Center, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Schneider, and he's been supporting this program, and he's been over there. Once a year, we have a great big report card called the ceremony, pass it on to who's making a good grade. The children just cannot wait to hold us. And he pass it on to the certain trophies, you know, those medals and great big trophies. And he usually stay and take a picture with the students. And those students, they love it. They take their picture to the school. Hey, you know what?
Thank you.
Took the picture with Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Shepherd, thank you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
You're okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a certificate of recognition for a very special Eagle Scout, Nigel Bailey.
Nigel has been an Eagle Scout since he was twelve years old. When he began scouting, he set his sights on earning all of scouting merit badges. At age sixteen, Nigel has been successful in achieving his goal and has received all one hundred and thirty-seven merit badges. Therefore, it is with great pride and that the city of Florissant and the mayor, Tom Snyder, recognizes and congratulates Eagle Scout Nigel Bailey for his dedication to the Boy Scouts and setting a great example for future scouts.
So Nigel, congratulations. Wow, one hundred and thirty-seven?
Yes.
So can you tell us about some of the favorite ones and maybe some of the ones that were kind of a chore to do?
Oh, okay. The chore ones were archaeology, landscape, architecture, architecture, just some of the ones I know I don't want to do as a profession.
Phil?
Yeah. But the ones I really like were scuba diving, welding, aviation, robotics, I really liked, and veterinary medicine.
Was there a golf merit badge?
I mean, there is a golf merit badge. Not my favorite. I'm just saying.
Yeah, just both.
Yeah, but, yeah, not really my favorite.
Gerard?
No, just, I read your article. Those of you may or may not know, Joe Holloman's article in Sunday's Post-Dispatch goes into more detail on this fine lad. And if you get a chance to read it online, or if you get a copy of the paper, it was amazing. I was very impressed. I was a Boy Scout, and that's all I'm going to say.
Just once again, you know, the city of Florissant is just so full of talented, wholesome people. And, I mean, getting all those merit badges, that's fairly a lot of dedication. And I'm sure it was a lot of fun, too. Do you have anything you'd like to say about the Scout? Let's give a plug for scouting.
I'm, sorry. I'm really excited about what can come within the future. I'm excited to be a mentor for my fellow youth in the city of Florissant.
Good. Thank you. And I think somebody else in the room deserves much recognition. He's sitting right over here. I think maybe you ought to say something there, too.
Why don't you come up here, Molly? Why don't you come up here? Okay, well, the camera's already on me, so it doesn't matter.
So Nigel was not prepared for all of the recognition that he was receiving. He really was just trying to do a goal that he had set out to do. And so I thank you guys for recognizing him. And I thank his scoutmaster and his leaders that have been there for him and encouraged him and kept him motivated along the way. So, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is communications. Clerk, please read the communications.
Email dated October 19, 2017, from Tim Green regarding legislative briefing.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings. Public hearing number seventeen eleven zero two seven.
Public notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, October 23, 2017, at 7:30 PM at the Florissant City Hall Council Chambers concerning the fiscal year 2018 annual plan for the Florissant Community Development Block Grant Program.
Ms. O'Meara? Hello.
Hello. Unfortunately, one of our CPC members couldn't be here tonight. She had a death. She had planned on presenting the Community Development Block Grant Fund Year 2018 budget. We held our CPC meeting on September 21, where I presented the proposed fund year 2018 Community Development Block Grant funds. And the CPC unanimously approved as it was presented. You should all have the plan in your packet. As you can see, we're going to continue to fund all the programs that addresses our priority needs that were established in our five-year consolidated plan. Nothing really has changed too much. We're going to continue with the Home Improvement Program, the Home Improvement Mechanical Program, the COPS Program, which we actually have rebranded and restructured it a little bit. And it's now going to be called Project Impact, which basically is the initiative to maintain properties and assist our community together. You guys were very generous in allowing us to add an additional part-time volunteer coordinator to our department, which has really allowed us to be able to propel that effort with the volunteers in a just really positive way. So the COPS Program was formerly known as the Community Oriented Policing Services, and then it changed to Community Oriented Problem Solving Program, which was just a mouthful. And the program or that activity has really developed throughout the years. The addition of Adam has been just tremendous. He has really reached out to a lot of different organizations and schools and groups to enhance the volunteer efforts. So we really felt it was time to relook at that name and give it a name that really, that we could brand and kind of move forward for the future. So the COPS Program is now Project Impact. And then, of course, our Mortgage, Rent and Utility Assistance Program. So that's pretty much the CDBG breakdown for 2018. The draft of the annual plan is available on the city's website or in our office, and it'll be open for a thirty-day public comment period, which will end on Wednesday, November 22. We would like to encourage everyone to review the plan and submit any comments to my office. That's it.
Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment? Seeing no further comment, Constable Shildroth moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Constable Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second readings. We have Bill number 9313. Constable Caputa moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Shildroth?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to thank the petitioner and members of council for asking this petitioner to change to Old Brick. Mr. Caputa and Mr. Jones, I appreciate your efforts in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Request to issue an amendment to B-5 ordinance number 8105 to allow for retail establishment, Dollar General, for the property located at 15275 New Halls Ferry Road.
Constable Caputa moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Request to issue an amendment to B-5 ordinance number 8105 to allow for retail establishment, Dollar General, for the property located at 15275 New Halls Ferry Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote. I'm sorry. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, with this, with the Dollar General, at one time, when they came up in front of us, been about, what, a month and a half ago, under public hearing, they had a building that wasn't up to code. It wasn't a full masonry building. And we explained to Dollar General what we wanted and what they were required to do with their building. And within less than twenty-four hours, they came back with the full masonry building. And which, I commend them for doing it so quickly. That means they want to, they want to come to the city again, you know, and build a brand-new building up there on the old Wedgewood tennis courts up there. And I think it'd be a great, great addition to that corner right there. So I'm glad they did that. And now we're going to have a full masonry building sitting there. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill number 9313 passes and becomes ordinance number 8353. Bill number 9314, Constable Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Constable Sayam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Malampe Gardens Acquisitions LLC DBA Spot House Restaurant and Bar to allow for operation of a restaurant and bar for the property located at 2 and 3 Malampe Gardens Shopping Center.
Constable Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Malampe Gardens Acquisitions LLC DBA Spot House Restaurant and Bar to allow for the operation of a restaurant and bar for the property located at 2 and 3 Malampe Gardens Shopping Center.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask if the owner of Spot House could come up for a moment. We didn't have an opportunity to meet or talk to you at the public hearing, so I got to meet you and your wife today. And I wonder if you wanted to tell us a little bit about what the place is going to be like, what your menu is going to be and so forth, and anything you'd like to tell us about the Spot House.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you pull that microphone a little bit closer? There you go.
Okay. Let's add me again. So, that's a question, some question?
Yeah, just go ahead and tell us a little bit about your menu and what you're going to be doing.
Yes, you know, we took, we called it Spot House Restaurant, yes, and located, I think, number two, number three, in the Garden Center, yes. But I think all but, I'm making, I'm making food, I'm making weather that I got.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Jay, I know you on a personal basis, and I know you run a good liquor store up at the end of Florissant Road. Only thing I'm worried about is to make sure that there's a trash can outside your new business, so we don't trash up the parking lot. So we're doing that with all our new businesses. We're trying to make sure that there's some kind of trash can. So people coming in and out will use that can, so we don't trash out the parking lot.
Okay, I do that.
We had an all in favor.
Okay. Anyway, orders to authorize a special use permit to Malampe Gardens Acquisitions LLC DBA Spot House Restaurant and Bar to allow for the operation of a restaurant and bar for the property located 2 and 3 Malampe Gardens Shopping Center. I think that was four.
I do, too. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill number 9314 passes and becomes ordinance number 8354. Good luck with your business. Bill number 9315, Constable Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by Constable Jones. Discussion? Are you turning the light on?
You can go first if you want.
No, I, well, okay.
No.
I don't have any.
Oh, I thought you were getting ready to go.
I just knew you were going for your light, and the other lights were on.
You know, this, this business has been in Ward Three for many, many years, and it's in dire need of a facelift. This gentleman does own several other properties in Florissant, and my hope is that as soon as he finishes with this property, he'll go down to one in Ward Number Two and begin working on that one as well. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders authorizing the repainting of masonry for the Kabul V Center Commercial Properties LLC located at 428 Hutter Show.
Constable Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders authorizing repainting of masonry for Kabul V Center Commercial Properties LLC located at 428 Hutter Show.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill number 9315 passes and becomes ordinance number 8355. Bill number 9316, Constable Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Henke. Discussion? Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. I proposed this ordinance because I think that it's very important that we in the city of Florissant take those steps to continue to, and I think we do a pretty good job, but we could do better at being more community-involved and getting people more involved in the community. This would essentially turn us into a golf cart city. I have had discussions with cities that have similar ordinances, and they've had little or no problems with the ordinances allowing golf carts on certain streets in the city. When you're out on a golf cart and you're, and you're driving in your neighborhood, you tend to stop and talk to people. And it's a great way for people to continue to meet and to get to know each other and their neighbors. And if you're in a golf cart riding around the block, your eyes are open as well. We built in some, some rules that would make it more palatable to most. You have to have a driver's license. You have to have lights and brakes on the car, brake lights, and you have to have insurance on it. So I hope to get support for this measure out of the council. We'll see. Thank you very much.
Mr. Henke?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I fully support this, Joe. Naturally, Ward Six here, it's a, it's a fit hand in a glove for Ward Six here, this golf cart ordinance. And just let you know, it's a long time coming. I fully support this. Thank you.
Constable Shildroth?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a minor question for the chief, and he answered at day one. So I'll be supporting this also. Thank you.
Okay, and now here I come. This is something that I, I think it's great. This bill worries me. And it's mainly, in my area, I have a tendency to have speeding issues. And I worry with golf carts on there. And the people that I've talked to in my area were questionable. So although I think it's a great idea and concept, I just have a feeling on some of my streets that people use more, are going down forty-five and fifty on a residential twenty-five and not getting caught, I, I get a little worried. I would be voting no. So, that's mine. So all in favor?
Aye.
Orders amending Chapter 340 miscellaneous driving rules by adding a new section 34105 golf cart regulations.
Constable Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Orders amending Chapter 340 miscellaneous driving rules by adding a new section 34105 golf cart regulations.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Vigano?
No.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill Number 9316 passes and becomes ordinance number 8356. Bill Number 9318, I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I wouldn't care if we have a second reading, but I'm going to be moving to continue this matter till the November 13th meeting. So, if we don't want to do a second, or we can, it doesn't matter. But, as we continue to look at this and...
Please to continue?
Yeah, I'll move to continue until November 13th.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
I take mine off. So, we're moving to continue. The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item in new business is board appointments. No. Oh. Still on the lights. Councilman Parson, they know why.
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to reappoint Mr. Tim Gory to the Parks Advisory Board.
Seconded by Councilman Childrath. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made.
She's trying.
I don't know. Next item is request. Councilman Caputa moves to approve a full package liquor license for A1 Mark and Package Liquor located at 2875 Patterson Road, seconded by Councilman Egan. Roll call, please.
Jones?
No.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
No.
Childrath?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Caputa, I did not see your light. Is there something you want to say, or we continue?
No, I'll explain to why, why I voted no on this. Personally, I think there's too much liquor right there in that corner. I mean, there's a gas station that sells liquor. There's a package liquor store across the street. There's a bar across the street. Less than a mile down the road, there's another liquor store that sells liquor. There's a gas station that sells liquor, and there's a bar right there. I feel that there's just too much of it in one concentrated area. That's, that's why I voted no on this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Childrath?
Thank you, Madam President. I voted yes. Three of those places you mentioned down the street are in St. Louis County. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
But still, still there. No matter from St. Louis County or another country. That's my personal feeling.
The motion carried, and the license is approved. Councilman Lee moves to approve a full liquor by-the-drink license for Spot House Restaurant located at 2 and 3 Malamphy Gardens Shopping Center, seconded by Councilman Egan. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion carried, and the license is approved. I will move to approve a full package liquor license for Alve Corp LLC, doing business as Grandview Convenience Food and Liquor located at 1711 Dunn Road, seconded by Mr. Egan. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
No.
Childrath?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
The motion carried, and the license is approved. Bills for first reading, Bill Number 9319.
Ordinance providing for the repeal of Chapters 500, 505, and 510 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Florissant, Missouri, as amended relating to the Building Code and enacting in lieu thereof, Chapter 505, and a new Chapter 510 on the same subject with certain modifications as herein after set forth.
Bill Number 9320.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $225,000 from the Sewer Lateral Fund to account number 0850 Professional Services to allow for reimbursement to the Metropolitan Sewer District for the installation of backflow prevention valves.
Bill Number 9321.
Ordinance amending Schedule 13, Table 13A, Parking Period at All Times on Certain Streets by adding portions of Florisoda.
The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Councilman Egan?
Thank you. This past Saturday, we had the Fourth Annual Race to the Shrine, and I just wanted to do, the event went really, really well. It was a lot of fun, well-attended. I wanted to thank the City of Florissant for the sponsorship. The Florissant Police Department did a great job of keeping everyone safe. Mayor Schneider led the race on, on his bicycle and finished in second. But, but he did really, really close second.
A lot better.
A lot better than last year. And I would like to thank the council that showed up. Ms. Pogano, Mr. Hanky, and Mr. Caputa came and helped hand out medals. It was just really a fabulous event. The, the one thing we did was a tiny trot, which was absolute mayhem for kids five and under, ran about 100 yards, and it was, it was mayhem and exciting. It was fun. It was everything that's good about the city. Thanks again. See you next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Egan and Kelly. You do so much up there, and it was wonderful. Councilman Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, if you own a firearm, make sure you secure your firearm. Do not leave it in your vehicle. Make sure you take it out of your vehicle and secure it in your home. Also, Ward 4 Neighborhood Watch, we have Adopt a Street program on Humes, and I'm challenging the rest of the council to do the same, to adopt a street. And we will be, November 4th, is on a Saturday, we will be, we will be out cleaning up Humes and Patterson Road, Summit Patterson, for our Adopt a, Adopt a Street program. Also, if you're not part of the Neighborhood Watch program, make sure you get ahold of Officer Steve Michaels and join your Neighborhood Watch. It's a very good program, and it does, it does help, and it does cut down on the crime in the city. For all the Marines out there, it's a sad day today. 33 years ago, the Marine barracks and Marine Embassy was blown up in Beirut. More than 200 and something Marines and office staff and other servicemen were killed during that. So, anybody that you are a Marine or are some Navy personnel, actually, when some Army personnel were killed in that terrorist attack, and we're still fighting the same people that did that back in 1983, and we're still fighting this terrorism with them. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmen Sayam?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to announce real quick that Councilman Parson and I will be holding a joint ward meeting on Tuesday, November 14th. It's going to be at 7:00 PM in the Egan Center Gymnasium. So, I hope all the residents of Wards 8 and 9 can make it and get an update on what's going on in the city, as well as bringing their own issues and concerns and everything too. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yep, just want to remind everybody about Team. If you guys got any extra canned goods, some change in the car, please stop by and give it to Team. Also, I've had quite a few calls about Shackelford, Hutter Show, between Malamphy and Charbonneer, that construction project has about another year left, and I know a lot of people's complaining about the speeding. So, I did go down there and find a nice pole to put a speed cam up. Hopefully, we can get that down, and it'll slow everybody down for the construction workers' safety, and hopefully, it'll slow down some of these cars, so we can quit having fender benders down there. Thanks.
Mayor?
Madam President, I want to give a shout-out to my friend Jeffrey here in the audience from Vintendo for Africa. They had a great celebration last Saturday evening at the JFK Center. Jeffrey is the heartbeat of that organization, which is, it just promotes the culture sharing and fellowship of all of our recent immigrants, who are new citizens of the United States, from Kenya, and primarily Kenya, but from other African nations as well, many of whom are newly Florissant resident, Florissant homeowner residents. So, congratulations, Jeffrey, on a great event Saturday. It was great to see the, the culture, some of the native that the children were doing. It's very similar to some of the stuff that I've seen at, it's interesting how similar it is to some of the stuff we see at the Thai Buddhist Center when they have their annual event. There's a lot of similarities. It's, the human race is a lot more similar than we are different. And also, you know, Mr. Egan, last year was kind of disappointing to me, because, you know, I really haven't lost too many races. And to come in third last year, I really trained hard this year, and I beat the guy with the, with the baby carriage. And where did that other guy come out of? Where did he come from? He, he, he passed me up and, and I lost sight of him and never saw him again, until almost...
Can I say something there?
Yes, sir.
But you were on your bike. You were riding.
And I think the kid in the stroller is now a little bit bigger and weighs a little bit more.
Is that 13?
I know. And he pushes him.
He was, he said he was nursing, he was nursing a little bit of a muscle pull or something. Anyway, we have Halloween coming up. We've got a whole bunch of events. We had, last Friday, we had the Dare Event of a JFK. That was fantastic. We, just the costumes, and they interacted with the Dare Officers, and it was just terrific. And we got the Spooky Snack and Crafts, October 26th, at JFK Center. And then, on Halloween, we've got, for all ages, pretty much anybody 12 and under. We've got the Egan Center open with different bouncy things and games for them to play. Ice Rink is going to open, I think, was going to open last week. I think it's opening this week, but I know we got a lot of ice skaters, a lot of hockey players that are waiting for their practice, so we're going to get that ice rink fired up as soon as possible, or fired down. And we, we're also very happy to welcome back Dr. Davis, who was cleared of all charges down in Florida. Total misunderstanding, he has, he has a credit card that's the same company as the one that they used to have at his old school district. And he, he pre-registered some hotel room, and it had pre, they still had the credit card alive from down there incredibly. And so, and, and the number is very similar to his own. And that kind of misunderstanding should have been taken care of with a phone call and not an arrest. And we're just so happy to have Dr. Davis back, the dynamic leader of Ferguson, Florissant School District. Ferguson Mayor James Knowles and myself welcomed him. We're at his news conference, and we're just ready for no holds barred. Ferguson, Florissant School District is on the move. So, I'm just very happy with that. And we got winter break camp, just kind of like a summer camp for those parents that, you know, you have a little time there where the children are off of school in, in Christmas time, yet the parents still have to work. So, we do have a camp. They can call the James J. Egan Center or the JFK Center for more information. It's run very similar to our summer camp. Soldiers' Wish List, where we have it set up here at City Hall. We need a lot of items for the troops over in Afghanistan and elsewhere, and so you can help with that activity. And then, we get the Veterans Day coming up, November 11th. November 12th, we're going to have, November 11th is Veterans Day, but November 12th's going to be the parade. It's going to start at Bangor and, and at the VFW down the street, and we'll have a ceremony to honor our Veteran of the Year down there. So, thank you, and that's all I got.
And City Constellation, Mayor, check your times, and you did have the best time in the tot run.